Welcome, everybody. I'd like to call this Special Board of Education meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, welcome, everybody, to this very special Board of Education meeting where we will appoint the next superintendent for the Somers Central School District. Before getting to the resolution and official appointment, I want to take a moment to provide a detailed overview of the collaborative and thorough process that the community and the Board have undergone over the past several months. In August of 2024, after careful consideration, the Board selected school leadership as its recruitment firm and officially began the search for our next school district's leader. In September and October, school leadership met with Board trustees and 81 stakeholders representing a diverse cross-section of our community on Zoom and in person, and along with over 400 survey participants, provided essential feedback to the consultants regarding the attributes the Somers community was seeking in our next leader. The Board would like to take a moment to thank everyone for participating in this very important process and providing this invaluable feedback. It was very important to the Board to make sure we heard from all voices in our community as we move forward in choosing our superintendent. The overwhelming participation and feedback from these various stakeholders underscored the significance of selecting a leader who embodies the virtues and capabilities that our community values most. On October 30th, 2025, the Board of Education adopted the following five specifications we were looking for in our next superintendent. A diplomatic-centered leader who excels at strengthening and unifying relationships and rebuilding trust across the district and community through ongoing clear, proactive, and transparent communication and engagement that encourages and invites participation. A savvy visionary leader with past success at establishing collaborative planning to develop and implement financial strategies necessary to ensure that a complex system will serve its stakeholders short and long term. A thoughtful, measured thinker who can lead innovative and future-oriented approaches to prepare students for school success and their post-secondary experiences while ensuring equitable inclusive access for all student groups. An approachable educational leader who models kindness and accessibility and is motivated to advocate for the well-being of students and the professional community to foster a supportive learning environment. A courageous, trustworthy leader who is mindful of the broad needs of the community and through good governance, collaboration, and partnership with school leadership teams will lead the district thoughtfully and wisely into the future. After a thorough and deliberate search process, the Board of Education is pleased to announce the unanimous decision to appoint Dr. Adam Bronstein as the individual who we believe unequivocally meets the specified criteria for the role of our next superintendent. To provide transparency, we want to share our recruitment process over these past few months. After posting the position on November 1st, school leadership began recruitment and received applications, and in January, after applicants were pre-screened by school leadership, the Board conducted first-round interviews with eight candidates over the course of three consecutive days, spending about two hours with each one and taking into consideration those five specifications I just mentioned, the community feedback and the desired qualities for our next leader. The Board truly worked as a team with the common goal of finding the best leader to drive us forward. I can honestly say this process has bonded us together and enhanced our capacity to be a more effective Board moving forward. After meeting with these eight highly qualified candidates, we chose three to bring back for a second round of interviews. The Board spent an additional two to three hours with each candidate and was able to probe deeper into their leadership qualities in a less formal setting. These more intimate sessions allowed us to gain further insights into their vision, strategies, and ability to connect with our community on a personal level. At the conclusion of these interviews, a single candidate emerged as the clear choice for all the trustees, Dr. Adam Bronstein. Dr. Bronstein was chosen unanimously by the trustees for his extensive educational experience and vision. His achievements and future goals match our district's needs, and we believe he will fit right into our Somers family. Dr. Bronstein originates from the Commonwealth of Virginia, where he commenced his academic journey at the University of Virginia. His passion for education led him to New York, where he is devoted over 20 years to public education. His career began in Washington Heights, New York City, where he not only taught the third grade bilingual classroom, but also coached high school football, imparting valuable life lessons to his students both in the classroom and on the field. While nurturing young minds in New York City, Dr. Bronstein pursued further academic excellence, earning a master's degree in teaching from Pace University. His unwavering commitment to education and professional growth then took him to Westchester, where he taught in both White Plains, the third grade, and Palom. In Palom, he not only taught fourth and fifth grade, he also served as the K-5 staff development coordinator for elementary schools as a technology coach. Dr. Bronstein's leadership extended into the summer months during which he serves as the summer school principal from Amerinick High School and as a summer school director within the New York City school public system, further demonstrating his dedication to student success year-round. During this period, he also achieved a master's degree in educational administration from Fordham University, equipping him with the skills necessary to lead and inspire educational communities. From Palom, Dr. Bronstein transitioned to Ardsley, assuming the role of assistant principal of the middle school, while there, he completed his Doctor of Education at the University of Pennsylvania in Educational Leadership Studies. His dissertation focused on the interpersonal characteristics and structural conditions that facilitate teacher collaboration. For the past decade, Dr. Bronstein has been an integral part of the Mount Pleasant School District, where he advanced from principal of Westlake Middle School to director of curriculum, and finally to assistant superintendent of curriculum instruction and administrative services. While at Westlake Middle School, he introduced the International Bachliorette Middle Years Program and Community Project, a coding course, and a fifth-to-sixth grade transition seminar for students. Once at the district level, Dr. Bronstein, in collaboration with the high school principal, initiated the AP Capstone Experience. This year, Dr. Bronstein was chosen as a fellow in the New York State Council of School Superintendents Future Superintendents Academy. In addition, over the past several years, Dr. Bronstein has presented on numerous educational topics, including the science of reading in Scarborough's rope, integrated multi-tiered systems of support, implementing design and STEAM education at the Guild of IB Schools, special education best practices at Pace University Graduate School of Education, worked with the Tri-State Consortium in K-5 Writing Visit Review, and interdisciplinary teacher collaboration at the Authentic Assessment Symposium and Purchase. These are only some of the highlights of Dr. Bronstein's accomplishments, and we have provided his resume on our agenda this evening. Dr. Bronstein resides in Amerinick with his wife Liliana and their two children, their two daughters Adriana and Lucia. I am so happy they were all here to join us tonight for this special evening. Dr. Bronstein's journey through numerous educational roles has equipped him with a vast array of skills and insights. His experiences in teaching, coaching, administrative leadership, and academic research positions him uniquely to address the evolving needs of students and educators alike. His focus on teacher collaboration and professional development underscores his belief in the power of collective effort to enhance student outcomes. The Board is confident that Dr. Bronstein is an exemplary fit for our community and will continue to propel Somers forward in excellence. We are honored to have Dr. Bronstein join the Somers community tonight and officially on July 1st, where his extensive experience and passion for education will undoubtedly foster a thriving learning environment, igniting a passion in all learners. Welcome, Dr. Bronstein. So now, I will read the resolution for the appointment of our superintendent of schools, and then I'll invite the Board to speak after. Whereas the Board of Education of the Somers Central School District seeks to appoint Dr. Adam Bronstein as superintendent of schools for the school district and to approve an employment agreement, setting forth the terms and conditions under which Dr. Bronstein will be employed. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Somers Central School District hereby conditionally appoints Dr. Adam Bronstein to the position of superintendent of schools for a three-year term to commence July 1st, 2025, and ending June 30th, 2028, subject to and contingent upon the satisfactory completion of the fingerprinting process required by the New York State Education Law, and be it further resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves an employment agreement with Dr. Bronstein, dated February 10th, 2025, setting forth the terms and conditions of employment under which Dr. Bronstein will serve as superintendent of schools during the aforementioned term, with an annual salary for the first year of the agreement to be $275,000, and hereby authorizes the President of the Board to execute same, subject to the conditions set forth above.
So moved.
Second.
Before we vote, I wanted to just allow all of the trustees to speak, have a few words if they wanted to. So.
Okay. Welcome, Dr. Bronstein. I just wanted, I had a little thought about all of our interviews that we had, and you got my vote when you were talking about being a football coach in Washington Heights, and the compassion and rigor that you had, all in one. And I just thought, wow, he's somebody special, and I think Somers is going to love you, and we can't wait for you to come to all the football games and to work with you as a group. And I just wanted to say to our Board, I think we're incredible, and I really felt so honored to be amongst all of you during this whole process. It was really wonderful, so, thank you.
Oh, so, you took most of them. No, it was, we started as this was going to be this long drawn-out process, but, you know, I think you were the first person we met on the first night, and, you know, throughout all the interviews, you hit the top of everyone's scorecard and sort of made it an easy decision. It wasn't, when we made the final decision, there wasn't much deliberation or back-and-forth. Everybody put down their score rankings, and you came out on top on all of them, so we're really happy to have you onboard. I'm glad that I was able to be a part of it, and looking forward to working with you for a long time in the future.
Well, usually, at this time, you know, you want to make impressions, do not speak, keep quiet for a long time. That's what I was thinking before, but, really, I am the only one that had experience to search superintendent once before. I really have to say something, I think. This time, our process is very, very smooth, and I think the leadership group, the consultant, initially, I actually have bid a reservation, but I think they did a very good job, and also our community and the school district itself is fantastic in collaboration with this process. As Amanda mentioned, you know, the different groups, different meetings, tonghols, so on. So, we end up having more than 40 applicants, lots of good candidates. When I first got the finalist list, when I read them, I was really overwhelmed, and maybe this is our luck. Who is the number one on the finalist? Adam Bronstein. And when I saw that, actually, it stopped, saying, we don't have to really go beyond that number one. And it turns out, you know, the process was very good for us as a Board to learn about, you know, quality of leadership, what is, you know, we are looking for, and so on, how do we interact with, you know, superintendent? Because this is a young Board. I mean, some Board members, pardon me, I say that, it's like a baby. They're only six months on the Board to do this whole process. So I think, you know, we really, really learned a lot, and I appreciate that whole process. And the second round of, you know, more personal interview, even more, you know, helping, we did have some debate and so on, but I think probably most people have already have that, you know, decision. The whole debating or commenting is a process to show that how much they really, you know, got into this. So this is my secret talk to you, and I probably won't do any more searching in my lifetime, so I shared this with you, and I, you know, thank God that we have a best fit, Dr. Bronstein.
Well, I just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight for this great moment. We're here tonight to welcome new superintendent, but that's not the only reason why we're here. We're here to welcome an entire family, to the Tusker family. It was a long process, but it was a good process. We not only found the best that you could find, we learned a lot about each other as a Board, made a lot of great decisions together, so, you know, I just wanted to share that little bit with us, with you guys tonight, and welcome, Dr. Bronstein, you and your family. Well deserved.
Thank you, and again, welcome to the Somers community. I take the advantage of saying something that you just mentioned to us in executive session about the pronunciation of your name for the benefit of the entire community. You said it's like Frankenstein, right? It's Bronstein, Bronstein. Girls, you probably didn't realize how special your dad was in terms of his professional accomplishments. I'm sure you won't get a big head from that kind of introduction. I think I know you at least well enough to say that. I think it's also important to echo what the other Board members have said and what Pat in particular said. This experience for all of us, I think, I'm speaking on behalf of everyone on the Board, really brought us together, and it was, as Amanda said repeatedly, unanimous, unanimous, unanimous. This was a unanimous decision of the seven of us, and had we gone back in time three or four months ago and realized we were going to come to a unanimous decision, I'm not sure many people in the community would have thought that the seven of us could unanimously agree on anything. The importance of that, why I say that, is because we're doing this for the benefit of our community, right? It's really important that the community understand that the seven of us have come together to make this appointment, to have the faith in you taking this school district for the benefit of our kids, our schools. So important, taking us forward together, and I want the community to know and understand the importance of that, that this was something that we've come together to do as a community, and I hope going forward, people remember that, and that this is an opportunity to further cement and develop a sense of community within Somers. So I really, really hope that that's what we're going to achieve here. So again, I want to welcome you. I know there's a couple more people who are going to speak, but I see a plate full of cookies and food over there, and I was always told, if you're the person between the food and the people, try to keep it as short as possible. So again, welcome, congratulations on your appointment, and this is a wonderful opportunity, I think, for us to move forward together as a community.
You know, going back when we started this process, we got such great feedback and involvement as Amanda already went through the timeline from the community, from so many people, and that was really critical to guiding us and really strengthening, you know, our focus on what we're going to need to look for. At the same time, we know, here in Westchester and in the area, there's a lot of districts looking for superintendents, so I'm thankful that we were able to, all of us, we were able to keep the pace moving, because we kind of felt an urgency. We knew there's a lot of great people out there, and I will say, going through that, thinking where our district, everything that our district has, all the great educators, the great programs, going into this, in my head, I'm expecting to come back with an experienced superintendent who's probably been somewhere for quite a few years, and that's what I thought we were going to end up with. But I was always open-minded, and I know, you know, we got our list of, got all the resumes, and it was impressive, and felt confidence there, but still a lot of trepidation going through, you really didn't know what to expect. And yeah, Adam was the first one that we met with in person, and it's like, after that, all the nerves went away. It's like, now I know we're going to be fine, no matter what. And all the other candidates were fantastic, they really, really were. But Somers, educators, administrators, community members, the families who are advocates for your children, and all the children here, you made it easy for us to sell Somers to Adam. You really did, and because we could talk, there's so much that we were all able to share with great confidence and without hesitation, and I knew that whoever was going to come in was coming to just really a great place, and taking it from here, growing it further, I'm just really, really excited, really thankful for everyone involved. Nancy.
Yes.
My gosh, she talks about keeping us moving, you know, she's just amazing. And I just want to give a shout-out to Amanda, too, because as our Board President, there's a lot that falls on her shoulders to do. She had to make the tough calls to the people that were working on. But there was a lot, and the organizational aspects of all of this, she kept us moving, and so I thank you significantly for that. And the whole Board, though, because everyone, and I think we've all, we've all shared it at times, and I feel emotional about this, but, you know, we all care about the children in our community and what we're providing to them, and that just comes out in spades. So, thank you, everyone. Welcome, Adam, and I'm just excited for our future.
Awesome, okay. Well, thank you, Chad, but yes, as you said, we are definitely all a team, and, you know, Nancy was definitely a huge part of it, too. She got us to where we all needed to be in all of our locations, thankfully. So I guess we should vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Okay. All right. So at this time, we are going to invite Dr. Adam Bronstein up to speak to the Somers community.
Thank you so much. I won't speak too long. It won't be a recitation of my resume, although that was very good, I must say. You were like an auctioneer in a former life or something. That was like very impressive.
Very fast.
Yeah, thank you so much. So this is actually a bit of deja vu for me, because I had shared with some of the administrative team in the Board of Education that I was part of a tri-state consortium visit to Somers School District, and our home base at that time, it was about like eight or nine years ago, I think, was actually Somers Middle School, in fact, in the very room where we just had the executive session. So it was like a weird sense of, I've been here before, and then I walked into this room, and I said, I've been here before, so who knew that it would all come, you know, full circle, and I'd be back, you know, eight or nine years later, but it's such a privilege to be here. I want to thank President Candell, Vice President Olson, and the trustees for your heartfelt words. I am extremely humbled to begin this journey together on behalf of all students and families in the Somers Central School District. I want to thank the Board, Margaret, Dom, Ife, Chad, Amanda, Pat, and Daryl. In a very brief time, I've enjoyed getting to know each of you and your aspirations for our district. I really, really look forward to our partnership. Thank you as well to our interim superintendent, Harry, for your assistance in what I know will be a smooth transition during the next four months. In our conversations, your insight, institutional knowledge, and expertise has been and will continue to be of great help. Congratulations as well on your upcoming re-retirement. To Nancy Carado, I have been blessed by amazing administrative support throughout my career, and from our time together thus far, I am excited to know that the best is yet to come.
Nice.
To the Cabinet, whom I've just gotten to know, your leadership is invaluable in an increasingly uncertain educational landscape. We will work together as a team to navigate the challenges ahead. And to the full administrative team, many of whom are here tonight, I believe you call it AdCo, as I understand it, I'll have to get used to that, I am excited to get to know each of you and to continue to develop your capacity to lead. To our faculty and staff of Primrose, SIS, SMS, and SHS, and at the district office, I thank you for all that you do each and every day to foster a passionate, engaging, and safe learning environment for our students. I truly can't wait to visit each school and classroom. To the greater town of Somers, Chris and I, who's sitting over there, we will continue the tradition of sound fiscal stewardship. To our PTAs, Education Foundation, Booster Club, Stars, and Team Tuskers, your support for our students through innovative programming, mentoring, and grants, a stellar athletics and performing arts program are all crucial to our continued success as a district. I'll look forward to meeting with you all as well. Lastly, to our families, and most importantly, your children, our students, the sacred connection between a child and their teacher is unparalleled, one that can provide a spark of curiosity for a future of infinite possibilities. It is my commitment that we will continue to preserve and nurture this important relationship. Now, I'm not sure if we have any students here tonight. Do we have any students here tonight? Okay, maybe a couple. All right, well, for those of you who are watching at home, is that where the camera is? Okay. So for those of you who are watching at home, you'll likely be able to help me with this next part. So throughout my career, I've only had bird and feline-based mascots. So when I heard that I might have the chance to have a pachyderm-based mascot, I got very excited and did a little bit of research about elephants. So, did you know that elephants are the largest land animals on Earth and are incredibly strong? Well, together, as a school system, we will continue to show strength through our unity. Did you also know that elephants use complex communication through both sound and nonverbal body language? Well, together, we will continue to regularly communicate with our families on our students' growth and achievement. Did you know that elephants often rely on social structure and strong bonds with other elephants? Well, together, our faculty and staff will collaboratively and will collaboratively support one another to make our schools even better. Finally, did you know that elephants are highly intelligent and exhibit problem-solving skills, self-awareness, and emotional intelligence? Well, together, as Somers Central School District, we will demonstrate all of these characteristics to develop scientists, mathematicians, engineers, writers, artists, athletes, and much more. During the next several months, what I'd like to learn more about is what makes us the Tuskers. You can stop me when I see you around and tell me your favorite thing about being a Tusker, or just say hello, and when I see you, feel free to call me Dr. Bronstein or Dr. B. I really can't wait to meet all of our students and families as well. Now, before I go, I have to thank some very important people. So, to my friends in Mount Pleasant, I am very, very grateful for our last 10 years together. In particular, I wish to thank our superintendent of schools, Dr. Peter Giurizzo, for his guidance, in addition to Dr. Curtis Coats, who gave me the opportunity to serve at the district level. To Dr. Marty Brooks, former executive director of the Tri-State Consortium, I thank him for his mentorship and advice for over 20 years and hope to emulate his indelible example. I'd also like to thank my grandfather, Milton, may he rest in peace, who planted that seed of leadership, and my parents, who are watching tonight remotely, my father for inspiring intellectual sophistication and curiosity, and my mother, a Spanish teacher for over 40 years, for inspiring a love of language and a strong work ethic. To my daughters, Adriana and Lucia, who are here tonight, I love you both for your sense of humor, your wit and intelligence, and reminding me that my dad jokes are not funny. We even did that in the car on the way here, I think so. And to my wife, Liliana, beautiful, brilliant, and patient, she has somehow put up with me for over 20 years. Thank you. So thank you all again for this great honor to be your next superintendent of the Somers Central School District. Go Tuskers!
Thank you, Adam. And before we adjourn, I believe Harry is going to have some remarks, and then we can get to the cookies. So just so you know, you're the guy between the cookies.
Just briefly, because I do not want to be the one holding it. I did want to welcome Adam to the Somers family, and I wanted to applaud the Board of Education for the tremendous job that they did in this search. It was a closed search, it was a long search, as you heard in Amanda's comments and from the comments of the Board members, and they kept us out of it. Myself, the Cabinet had no clue until just recently, and I really applaud you for the work that you've done. It's a great job and not one that you're going to have to do for many, many years, which is good. I did have an opportunity to meet with Adam last week. We had a couple of hours to chat, and he's going to be a wonderful, wonderful leader for the Somers School District over the next quite a few years. I feel very comfortable that at the end of June...
Resolve that the special meeting of the Board of Education be adjourned.
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.